Mrs. Hurley.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, is it public hearing or resolution number 31-2022? This is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal years 2022-2026 capital improvement plan to allow funding for the Circuit Court for Wacomiko County, security upgrades in the amount of $211,358.82, and to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Administrative Office of the Courts in Wacomiko County, Maryland, on behalf of the Circuit Court for Wacomiko County. And we have Melissa Leahy here, Circuit Court Administrator, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for resolution number 31-2022. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern. Seen none. That concludes the public hearing on resolution number 31-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution number 31-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Good evening. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you for considering this this evening. This is our annual request to the Administrative Office of the Courts to upgrade security capabilities in the Circuit Court. As in years past, this is a reimbursement-based grant, so the county is accountable for funding the initial purchase of the equipment. That is then reimbursed by the state. The equipment then becomes the property of Wacomiko County.
Thank you very much. Questions, council members? So you say it will be, it's reimbursable?
Yes.
What happens if it's reimbursable? What happens when the money comes back to the county? Is it?
I believe the county submits, or Circuit Court actually submits the county receipts, and then it's paid that way.
Can anybody hear me? Yes, we can hear you, Andy. We have Pam Olend here. Thank you, Pam, Finance Director.
Pam Olend, Finance Director. So as with all of our other reimbursable grants, the county is floating the cash, but ultimately then that cash comes back into our bank account. So there is a grant process that we have. We account for the expenditure because we have to expense it.
Okay.
But then we get the revenue back in, so it becomes a net zero to the county in the amount of what gets reimbursed by the state.
So you'll be anticipating that in the operating budget for the next year?
It's actually, does not go through the operating budget typically, and it will actually be, we'll put it through the grant fund, because remember, the county has a separate grant fund that we account for grants. And so we would set this up as a project in the grant fund and account for it that way.
All right, thank you. I didn't know, Mr. Mitchell, if you had a comment? Okay. He may, he was speaking earlier. I thought maybe he had something. Any other questions? Okay. Seen none. All those in favor of resolution number 31-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is resolution number 32-2022. This is approving the purchase of a 0.244 acre parcel of land at the corner of U.S. Route 50 and Hobbs Road, Wacomiko County, Maryland, from the State of Maryland Department of Transportation. And council had a work session on this request on March the 15th, and we have Mr. Paul Wilber here, County Attorney.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution number 32-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Wilber, good evening.
Good evening.
Any comments you'd like to make, or are you here for questions?
I think it's self-explanatory, as was proposed here. Fortunately, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Gilkerson, and Mr. Slotman are willing to pay all the expenses for this, which is helpful to the county.
Good. Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seen none. All those in favor of resolution number 32-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number 33-2022. This is to adopt the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program Citizen Participation Plan, and this is Mr. Jesse Drewer with our Department of Planning and zoning.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution number 33-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Good evening, Mr. Drewer. How are you?
Good evening. Again.
Yes, yeah. We'll let you, if you just want to give us a brief overview.
Okay. This plan is updated every five years for the Community Development Block Grant Program. This plan was last updated in 2017, and it is pretty much straightforward from the last time we did this, with the exception of virtual participation, where we added Zoom components now, since it's become a thing since 2017.
Okay. Any questions from council? All those in favor of resolution number 33-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Okay, next is resolution number 34-2022. This is to adopt the Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan, and again, Mr. Jesse Drewer worked on this project.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 34-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Pretty much the same forward as last time. This plan was in 2017, and it just revolves around if community development block programs are used to displace or relocate someone during a project, they must adhere to HUD standards.
Okay. All those in favor of resolution 34-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Drewer.
Okay, next is the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARPA, Quarterly Project and Expenditure Report.
Thank you. There you are.
Ran out, Bill, sorry.
Sorry, feel a little left out.
Sorry, I ran out. Pam Olend, Finance Director.
Charles Schmickel, Deputy Finance Director.
And I'm going to let Charles talk a little bit about this, and if you have any questions, please let us know.
For you is the required compliance report from March through December 2021 for the state and local fiscal recovery funds, the SLF RF, enclosed as a detail of projects that have used SLR SF funds and amounts obligated and expended. The due date of this report was January 31, 2022, and the Acting County Executive certified the report on January 28 before the deadline.
At December 31, the main expenditure out of it was the bonuses that were paid to the correctional officers and the emergency services dispatchers in both the Sheriff's Office and emergency services. That was the majority of the funds at December 31. And that was, and then there was the second obliga, second obligation of that one, because the second payment came in January. I'm, sorry, timeline has escaped me at the moment. I apologize. So the next report is due at the end of April, and we will provide council a copy of that report once it is submitted.
So what's our balance as we sit here today, give or take?
Give or take about, well, we received about $10 million, and about 9.5 of it is still remaining and unexpended. I don't, please don't totally quote me on that, because I did not bring that exact dollar amount, but I can get you that exact dollar amount if you'd like.
I'm just trying to get an idea. So I mean, the bulk of it?
The bulk of it is still available, and we are expecting to get the second payment in May. So, and again, none of this is recognized as revenue until the moment we spend it. So until we expend it, it is not revenue. So ultimately, it is a balance sheet item, and that's what the auditors told you at the last meeting when we had the auditors here.
Will there be some type of addendum on the actual operating budget that will pass that will at least give us some idea of what funds are out there?
So in last year's operating budget, we put a list together of what we were putting in there, and we will do that same thing for this year's operating budget, as well as to, as to what we are planning to use. There's a, there's a line item in the budget, but then if we don't spend it, the expenses also don't happen either. So, but we will, that information will be passed along and explained to council during the budget process.
Wasn't there another fund that was given to the airport separate from this?
That's all considered CARES money.
Ah, so.
And they, they have separate reporting requirements, separate deadlines, and they have been coming back to you guys periodically to amend the grant documents associated with that.
That's right. Will we get a breakdown like that, like this on that?
I can look at, into providing that. I can't, but we will, we'll look at what information we can provide to you.
You'll look at what information you can provide. Okay, thank you. All right. Josh?
What's the next payment? We said we were getting, so that's the full, it's the 10 million also?
Yes, that's the, that's the remaining payment. The way the, the federal government structured it is, is it's paid in two payments. I haven't heard that it's not being paid in the second payment. It's being paid in two payments, but you have multiple years after that to utilize it.
Do we, as a county, plan on utilizing the full amount?
Yes.
Are we matching any of the funds, or are we doing anything that you know of, or that you can talk about regarding, you know, I know the tri-county council just received $10 million from the, from Governor Hogan, and that money could be used for infrastructure projects or other kind of work, I don't know, broadband, you name it. I don't, I don't have obviously the language as far as what's, where we can spend the funds on, but I don't know if we plan, or if that's in the current calculus to be able to try to utilize any of these funds to, for a greater purpose, even if we can match with other funds that are around.
We will be spelling out to council in the budget how we are looking to spend it when the budget is presented at the next council meeting.
And I'll just, of course, say that, you know, broadband is still a big issue. If we are able to spend any of those funds, as you can do your investigative work and your magic on any of that, that's still a really big issue in the community, and I'd love to continue to see that addressed, especially if we could match it with other funds. Thank you.
If we're putting in suggestions, I'll put Sue right there.
And, and again, we have, we have, we have talked to council, and it's not, I mean, this one isn't, shouldn't be a surprise to council. We've talked to council that the first year of the funding for the raises that we're proposing for employees are eligible to be counted under this, and that's how, how we are looking to fund the first year.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
Good.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Ms. Hitchens, good evening.
Good evening. I call your attention to resolution 35-2022, accepting the bid process audit report.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 35-2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
As you may recall, last month, I presented the vendor audit report, which focused on purchases in the $1,000 to $25,000 range. The bid process audit focused on purchases $25,000 and above. In general, the process for selecting a vendor at this level goes through request for proposal, or RFP, formal sealed bid, contract piggyback, or sole source, which then gets approved by county council. The formal bid process is when the county knows the specifications of a product or service that's needed, formal bid documents are published publicly, vendors submit their bid document packets in sealed envelopes to be opened at a predetermined date and time in a public meeting. The RFP is when the county knows their goal, but they don't necessarily know the ins and outs or specifications that are needed, so they do a process similar to the bid process. Vendors submit bid document packets that are revealed publicly, but then after that, a committee is formed to judge the proposals on various criteria, not just price. We have sole sources. That occurs when only a single vendor can provide the requested product or service. That request is made by the using department that goes to the purchasing agent, who then brings it before the county council. And finally, you have piggybacking, which allows the county to receive contract terms from federal, state, and co-ops that have already completed this due diligence process. In calendar year 2021, the county had 162 purchase orders that were over the $25,000 threshold. That totaled 23.6 million. The purchasing department did 56 public solicitations during that calendar year and brought three sole sources before the council. The program's design is at a satisfactory level, which is the highest rating from the IIA. I did provide them with one recommendation in this audit report, which is to evaluate the cost effectiveness of adopting an electronic bid software, which would provide further control beyond what we have, but the control we have is the standard from the research I did. I would like to thank the purchasing department's staff for their participation and allowing me to come and view some bid openings, which weren't as exciting as you would think they would be. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Just for clarity, do we, we do currently have software for bid software?
We do not.
Okay.
Everything is pretty manual. Vendors can mail their bid packets in, or they can drop them off, but it has to be before the deadline. Electronic software would, while, you know, while we do adhere to that deadline, because the public opening is normally at like a 2:30 on afternoon stay, the electronic software would absolutely stop anyone from getting in, even two seconds late.
As far as your recommendation was concerned, how was that received?
It was received well. Nick actually had, and he's already aware of it. He's also aware of things coming down the pipeline through the state, and he said there's, there's a possibility that the state is going to mandate electronic use in the future, as well as possibly mandate a vendor. So before moving along on that too far, we have to really see what the state is going to do through their procurement process.
Okay. Seems to make sense. Any other questions? All those in favor of resolution number 35-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Hitchens.
Thank you.
At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
Good evening, Honorable President Cannon and county council members. Again, my name is Mary Ashanti, and in reference to the legislation on a police accountability board, I support the letter that was sent in, and I believe that you received a letter with my signature on it that was emailed to you all. I support the recommendation by ACOU. I support, and as you will see when you look at the information, Anne McGreen, Executive Director of Phoenix Youth Project, Michelle Gregory, Salisbury City Council District Four, James already mentioned that he support, and Reverend James Jones, Caucus of African-American Leaders on the Eastern Shore, and also President Rogers has also said that. I'm a member of the Caucus of African-American Leaders on the Eastern Shore, but I'm not here, and of course, I support their recommendation, but I'm not here to recommend, to represent either organization tonight. I have concerns, and maybe it'll all turn out okay. One of the questions I want to ask is, will there be other hearings on this Police Accountability Act of 2021? I'm hoping that it will, but prior to the other hearings, I'm hoping that the community will be given the proper information from this body as to, so that the, the community will understand what this act does, and if there's any benefits from this and whatever. I'm sorry that, and I haven't read the article, but I'm sorry that someone from law enforcement thinks that this act is detrimental to law enforcement. It seems that anything that mentions accountability for law enforcement is an act against law enforcement. It couldn't be that we want to have accountability, that we want to have the same rights that law enforcement have had for years and not been held accountable. If a civilian, over the years, killed a law enforcement, there is no doubt of prosecution or whatever, but as history has shown us, if somebody in law enforcement kills a civilian, the same thing does not happen. So law enforcement and civilians are equally valuable. In God's eyes, I didn't read anything that says law enforcement is more valuable than the rest of us. I haven't read that. So I'm asking you to forget who's your friend and to do your job, and do what's fair for the citizens of Wacomiko County, especially those that are Black, Brown, and live in underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashanti. Any other public comments?
Forgive me, I'm running on like four hours of sleep. Forgive me, council members, county executive, forgive me. Once again, my name is Dorian Rogers, President for the Salisbury University NAACP, and I want to focus on our institution at Salisbury University and the state of the minority. I can say that my four years, I've learned so much, and I'm not just speaking from a 21-year-old, going on 22-year-old student with a double major of political science and international studies. I'm talking about a Black man that chose to come to this institution because I wanted to embetter myself and embetter my communities, especially given the majors, the involvement, all the avenues that I've done to, again, ensure that I'm engaged in a duty-driven citizen alongside like-minded individuals. And there has been a series, not just this year, but in prior years, of discrimination, defamation, and targeting of people of multicultural backgrounds at Salisbury University. I would like to give some demographics. At the institution, there is a percentage of 12.5% of Black and Black diaspora of students that are at Salisbury University, and there has been, once again, a series of targeted attacks, whether it was written, whether it was, again, through the graffiti, whether it was through actual acts to, again, make it clear that hate has a home at this institution. Now, I want to make sure that I emphasize something, because again, it would be contradicting if I, as a political science major, would not recognize this. It's often debated as to defamation and how it conflicts with the First Amendment, the very fabric that holds our First Amendment together, freedom of speech, as you may. But what we found is not only references to, one, knowing how to lynch, which is ironic, because right outside these doors, if I'm not mistaken, there was one of the last state lynchings that have taken place in Salisbury, let alone the state of Maryland, but also acts to specifically target young people of color who are exercising what they are learning in the classroom to, again, embetter their community, especially as an institution of higher learning, not an institution of selective learning. I want to make sure that I emphasize that. And so, once again, there has been specific targetings of students of color, students with disabilities, and students of the LGBTQIA communities. Again, they all intersect. When we talk about, again, an institution that prides itself on diversity, equity, inclusion, while I close out, I want to make sure that I'm emphasizing that I'm not targeting Salisbury University, because again, this is the institution that I chose, where I built myself up alongside many other students that look like me, that are like-minded, that are pursuing similar tracks. But when are we going to say that enough is enough? We talk about police accountability. We talk about accountability as, again, individuals in society. Well, what are we doing to match actions to our words? And so I want to officially, as President of the Salisbury University NAACP, welcome all the council men and women to April the 27th, that's a Wednesday at 7:00 PM at Salisbury University, the fourth floor of our library, for the State of the Minority Report, where you can hear for yourself the experiences of multicultural students, not just on race, but on sexual orientation, gender, disability, class, you name it. Because again, if we truly value these elements, especially as a community, we need to make sure that we are matching actions to our words. And so I want to bring this to all of you as honorable council men and women, to the attention that you all have. So I yield back. I thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I just had a question for council about the salary study. From a citizen's point of view, I feel it is imperative that the entire study be released to the council and made public, as taxpayer dollars paid for this study. Based on what was released, only bits of information are made public. As a citizen, I would like to know what the means of comparison were, what counties were used as a model. Was it all in the state of Maryland, where the county is comparable to Wacomiko? Do any of you have any of these answers?
If you would like to supply those answers with Mrs. Hurley, that would be fine, and we could address that.
So there's more than what was released?
What I'm saying is, it's not really a Q and A on public comments.
Got you, okay.
But if you would, if you would give that information to Mrs. Hurley, we'd certainly follow up.
Will do, yeah. I just wanted to add, it's interesting that some job pay differential is a mere $1,247, such as a maintenance worker for our roads, with a current salary of $26,678 to $27,925, which, based on inflation, should at least be $600 more. And yet, this study has a job like the purchasing agent going from $70,000 to $103,000, someone who's not even a department head, making over $100,000 per year. Again, we're just trying to figure out where these numbers come from, and I ask the council to ask Acting County Executive to provide the complete study in its original form. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other public comments? Council comments. Josh?
I'll say that I, this past Saturday, I know I, and a couple other council members, Mr. Cannon and Mr. Davis and Mr. McCain also attended, and it might have been others that couldn't, it was a large room, but we attended the Sarbans. Now, it wasn't really a memorial, but we had an event at the Salisbury University to, that was kind of to honor Paul Sarbans, who of course is a, you know, he was, he was quite an individual who really rose to national, international prominence, but he's from here, from Salisbury, and his final resting place with his wife is actually here in Salisbury, despite the fact he spent the rest of his life, the majority of his life, in Baltimore. So it was a wonderful event. It was really great to be able to, once again, reflect on what it is for public service, to have an individual who, you know, seeks great integrity, who wants everyone's opinion and voice, and is not about being in the camera, or being in the front eye, but, you know, but, but trying to actually do the right thing. So it was a great event, and I just want to say, that's the kind of leadership that I think I want to continue to see, people of integrity, who want to be good public servants, and Paul Sarbans will always be a hero of mine. So I'll leave that.
Any other council comments? Joe?
Yes. It was a bit busy weekend for council members, if they wanted to be. I'm sure you guys went to a lot of events. I had the opportunity to attend Mount Hermon Plow Days. Turned out, the weather was great, little wind, not too hot, not too cold. And I do want to recognize two people in the audience that has hosted that event for many years. Galen and Tammy, can you stand up, please? These, these folks have hosted that event for the group that puts it on, and it's a great event for the east side of Wa, well, for all Wacomiko County, as far as that goes. We even had one of our former county administrators there from Worcester County. Weston showed up, him and his family, so we got to see him. The other thing is, I got to go to the Pittsville Farmans banquet Saturday night. There were seven members that received proclamations. One member actually got one for 52 years now. Most of the time, they would give it at 50, but due to COVID, we hadn't had a meeting, they hadn't had a banquet in a couple years. So that one individual, Mr. Alan Richardson, had 52 years of service. That's, that's a long time to be in a fire department, and we were proud to be able to present him with a proclamation. So had a lot of folks there from different fire departments and different town of Pittsfield Commission were there, so had a good time. It was, it was great to be there.
Thank you. Larry?
Yes. It's amazing how many organizations we recognize tonight. It's amazing how many organizations we recognize tonight with proclamations, and I'm sure there's a lot out there that we could have recognized, but we probably didn't know about it. So thank you, everyone, that showed up for that today. This past weekend, Saturday, like Mr. Holloway and Mr. Hastings stated, it was a busy weekend. The Fruitland Easter Parade went on, and I've been participating in that for at least eight years now, and I want to thank the council members that were able to attend. It was a nice event. Mr. and Mrs. Atkins, thank you for hosting the Mount Hermon Plow Days. I think that event keeps getting bigger and bigger every year. A lot of people come from all over, and it's amazing. Next week, we won't meet again, but Good Friday will be here, so I hope everyone has a Good Friday and a Happy Easter. So thank you, everyone, that came to the meeting for different views, and thank you for those who spoke out.
Any other comments? Bill?
Just real quick, I mean, we're mentioning a lot of the events that took place over the weekend. One of the other events was the Salisbury Marathon. They had over 1,200 participants this year. And, you know, people come from, actually, all over the country because there's a Boston qualifier, and, you know, it's a very popular event. And, you know, kudos to the organizers of that event. I mean, that's quite a bit of logistics to 26 miles of our county roads and city streets being covered and all the water stations and the police and everything for road crossings. It takes a lot of folks to make that work, you know? And also, I can say this, I think I was the only council person I saw running on the course. So I ran the half marathon and...
That's because I was ahead of you.
Yeah, that's right. You're all in front of me, that's what it was, yeah.
Thank you, Bill. All right.
I'll speak on the police accountability bill. As a former police officer, we're going to do what's right for the county. I mean, we're going over this thing page by page. We got, really, three lawyers assisting us to make sure we do what's right. And you also got to realize, this thing came from the state. So there are some things that we're not going to be able to change because it's being mandated by the state. So there are some things we will be able to tweak, but not all the things. And that's why we have the lawyers here with us to guide us to make sure we do what's right. And I can say, I worked with most of these guys for, some of them for eight years, and I think we're going to do what's right to make sure the county is in good shape for this Accountability Act. And as you can see, we're not going to rush through it just to make sure we got it done, just to say we're the first one to get it done. We're going to take our time and do it right because you got to look at it from both sides. If you start pushing a lot of things against the police officers, and I can tell you this, you go back to Anarona County, those counties that got it, and you'll see police officers back off. And I've seen that firsthand when I worked PG County and DC probably was the first ones to have one. We were standing on a DC Merlin County line, and we watched a gentleman steal a car with DC police officer standing right there. And we asked him, "Why didn't you arrest those guys?" He said, "Because what might happen to us in the end if that kid go wreck the car and kill someone." Not saying that we're going to back off on that, but we got to take our time and make sure a thing is done right so we can protect both sides, the police officer and the public.
Any other comments?
Under presidential comments, I'd have to repeat some of what everyone has said before. I did not participate in Salisbury Marathon. And if I had, I might have gotten three blocks. But I did drive, not deliberately, not directly through it, but I did drive by it on the way to the Fruitland Parade.
I thought I saw you ride by, yeah.
I did, I did. Swerved a little, but I was texting. But I'd like to thank the sheriff's office for their participation in this because this is such a worthwhile project for the city of Salisbury, and what goes well for the city of Salisbury goes well for Wycomico County. And having that many people here is a real blessing to have so many people, and the people who put the time to have and to put it on, we want to make sure it's a great show, and I think it really was. We had our deputies positioned in many locations to make sure everybody was safe. I managed to stay in my lane on the way to Fruitland, and I'd like to thank the city of Fruitland for such an excellent parade that they had. From there, I did go to the Plow Days, and again, this is from Mr. Atkins, very excellent, excellent job. I like to say to Reverend Perdue also, does an excellent job, and how he still gets in there and he tells it like it is, and everybody, he has everybody's complete attention. And on 300, well, I wouldn't even say that, I'd say, I mean, do you know the attendance? Was it at least 1,000?
2,200.
2,200, yeah. And the way it keeps going, there's going to be, you know, it's only going to escalate, there's going to be 4,200 next year. So it was a great event, really enjoyed it. Joe, you mentioned the Pittsville banquet. Again, to those of the volunteer fire company in Pittsfield, apologize for not being able to make that, but I had the prior obligation, as Councilman Hastings said, with the recognition dinner for Sarbans, which had been planned months ahead of time. But thanks to all them who, in the Pittsfield Fire Company, for everything that they do and those that receive the accolades. Two other issues, just so that the public knows, we've been dealing with environmental issues with our health department. Lori Brewster is doing everything she can to try to make sure that if you're having septic systems put in, or if you're installing them, if you're trying to sell a house, or you're buying a home, and these issues come up, we are really trying to get a handle on this in Wycomico County. We've had a lot of pushback from the state, which, some good, some bad, I think some of it was a bit disappointing, and the pressure that they're putting on our local inspectors. We have had meetings, the council has had meetings with both the Secretary of the Maryland Department of Environment and the Assistant Secretary of the Maryland Department of the Environment to try to alleviate these concerns, and we're still moving forward with that. I spoke to Lori Brewster today at their Health Week, and I also met with Secretary Schrader, he is a secretary of the Health Department in the state of Maryland, and I expressed our concerns again to him. The county council, for the most part, I think, has determined that, really, the issue with the Health Department and not being able to have a consistency in the efficiency of operations is simply because, comes down, they don't have enough people. They don't have enough inspectors to get out there and do the job as is needed. So the council is open and willing to pay more to these individuals. But there's this little, there's this bit of an arrangement between the state and the county level as to whether the county can just pay them more money. It seems, as I'm trying to sort through it, it appears that the state of Maryland, it's sort of a hybrid operation, the state of Maryland sets the cap as far as what will be allowed. So we have to sort of, I guess, go around that in order to get permission to allow that cap to be higher so that the county can subsidize the Health Department and get the people in there that we need. And we have committed to those fundings. I think the county executive would equally, I believe, commit to those fundings for the benefit of everyone in Wycomico County in our next operating budget. So I did stress the sense of urgency to Secretary Schrader today. In addition, Fallen Heroes Bill, we've been working on that. We will, most likely, we'll have it back as a work session or next meeting, trying to get some property tax relief for those in the public safety arena who are injured, permanently injured, and looking for some type of relief. And the idea is to get them property tax credits so that they don't have to worry about those bills to a certain degree. So just so everybody in the public is aware, the county council is still working towards those measures. That being said, entertain a motion to adjourn from legislative session so we can go to open work session. Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Means adjourned? Yes, convenient, is the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 20-22, I mean, 2022-06, April 5th, 2022. First item on the open work session agenda is the Law Enforcement Review Board legislation. Convenient, gentlemen, if you could announce to the public your name and your position, we'd appreciate it.
Paul Welver, county attorney.
Andrew Illuminati, county attorney's office.
Thank you. I think we had to cut you short the last time.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Where were we on section five? How far had you gotten on page five, or?
We were on the Administrative Charging Committee session.
Okay.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Based on some of the recommendations we got, is it possible, when we're going through this, for the attorneys to let us know whether we can deviate from any of their recommendations or not?
Yeah, I think, yeah, if you have questions in regard to what comments were made, certainly. It's a good idea, thank you. We'll let you go first there.
So I think we'll start back with the flow chart of how everything operates. So this is not designed for Wycomico County in particular, this is how state law operates. A civilian can file a complaint of police misconduct with either the Wycomico County Police Accountability Board or with the law enforcement agency which employs the officer who's the subject of the misconduct. If it's filed with the Accountability Board, the Accountability Board, within three days, has to send it over to the agency which employs the officer subject to the complaint, the agency that conducts its investigation. So that's the sole interaction that the Accountability Board has with an outside complaint. After the agency conducts its investigation, it sends the investigative file to the Administrative Charging Committee. So when we look at who's a member of the Administrative Charging Committee, the Accountability Board, the chair of the Accountability Board sits on the Administrative Charging Committee, and then two citizens are appointed by the Accountability Board to sit on the Charging Committee, and two citizens appointed by the county executive with the approval of the county council sits on the Administrative Charging Committee. So that group is made up of five individuals. Those five individuals then review the investigative findings and make a decision whether to charge. They can elect not to charge, in which case, the complaint is terminated. Or if they charge, they make a recommendation as to discipline within the matrix that is being established by the state. I believe that's finalized now, so that entire matrix is outside of this county's control. The idea is that the same offense in each county will have the same disciplinary range, no matter if you, the officer is charged with misconduct in Garrett County, Baltimore County, Prince George's County, or Wycomico County. And the ACC has the range, depending on what charges are filed, and presents and makes a recommendation based on a state-established matrix. At that time, the law enforcement head presents to the officer the offer. The officer can then accept the discipline, at which time, the entire process is over. Or if discipline is refused, it can be a settlement negotiation, at which time, it's not that the head of the law enforcement agency overrides the charging committee, the settlement negotiation goes back to the Administrative Charging Committee. The Administrative Charging Committee can accept the settlement negotiation, at which time, the officer then accepts it, and the matter's concluded. Or the ACC rejects the proposed settlement, sends it back to the head of the law enforcement agency, at which time, the officer can either accept the original discipline or can refuse and go to the trial board. So the Administrative Charging Committee, out of all three of the state-mandated boards, is the one that is the most controlled by state legislation or regulation. So we're looking at the proposed bill at this time, and when we go to the Charging Committee, if it's in yellow, it's all, it was part of House Bill 670, or if it's in green, it's a current proposed regulation that will be part of the Maryland Code.
Say it again, the yellows of...
The yellow is part of House Bill 670, which was what created all of the boards last year, and the green is the proposed regulations. And so, what the process for the proposed regulations was, the Maryland Police Training Commission created a set of regulations. The training commission's composed of delegates, senators, individuals in the law enforcement community, Chief Duncan of the Salisbury City Police Department sits on there, Sheriff Lewis of the county sheriff's office sits on there, Berlin's chief sits on there, a lot of individuals from across the state sit on this, a representative from the State's Attorneys Association sits on there, individuals from the government's office sits on there. And those individuals who constitute the committee voted up and down on what the code of reg, the code regulations, proposed code regulations will be. And that was finalized before, I was before, the council last time. And so eligibility criteria we see here, you must be 21 years of age, then you must be a legal resident or citizen of the United States, you must sign an agreement to maintain confidentiality, going on down through all of these parts. If it's in green, that's a proposed regulation that's being, going through the review process now. And the review process is it goes to the Attorney General for legal sufficiency, it can then come back, it can then be advertised to the public, there can then be a comment period from the public, and then it's ultimately printed and adopted as part of the COMAR, which is Code of Maryland Regulations. So the term conflict of interest is where it's defined in the proposed regulations, self-reporting of the proposed regulations, how long the terms will be. So the initial term, because the goals, that the state law, as you can see it too, required staggered terms to avoid having the county executive delineate exactly who would be serving the lesser term on the first staggered run, the COMAR regulation said who's going to serve the staggered terms. The COMAR proposed regulation determines that no more than three consecutive terms can be served. How somebody's removed. And then, you know, here, the county executive, this is something that this council could determine, but the county executive shall submit a budget, oversee the staff of the Charging Committee. The county executive shall establish the procedures for record-keeping by the Wycomico County Administrative Charging Committee. Then the duties of the chairperson, those are, again, all regulations that are being proposed by the state, when the matters have to be resolved, as state law...
Andrew, can you back up to the, because this is one of the questions that's been brought up about the chair? Yeah, selection of the chairperson.
Yes, okay, so...
So they choose the chairperson.
So the, if I may, councilman?
Yep, please.
So the Police Accountability Board is the individual where the 20 years of service, and Councilmember Hastings asked time to discuss the possibility of the state's attorney serving. So the question is, why would those sort of qualifications be required? And so, looking back at House Bill 670, the requirement on the governing body shall appoint a chair of the Police Accountability Board who has relevant experience to the position. And that's a pretty generic term, but when we look at what the duties are of the chair and the chairs sitting on this Administrative Charging Committee, the belief was that having somebody with that background experience. Now, the chair doesn't have any higher of a vote than anyone else, but that's sort of where the thought was, and something that Caroline County implemented, in having that individual with that background experience. So we're on, I'm going to make a note, for the record, we're on page 17 right now, but when we're going back to say what exactly are... We're looking at page 10 of the bill, and it says, in the current form, "To the extent practicable, the chair of Wycomico County's Police Accountability Board shall be a retired sworn law enforcement officer who retired in good standing with at least 20 years of service in a Maryland law enforcement..." service in a Maryland law enforcement or federal law enforcement agency, shall have been the head of a law enforcement agency or in a command position within a law enforcement agency, and shall have academic credentials that include degree from an accredited college or university with a major in either pre-law, police administration, or criminal justice for completion of the FBI National Academy or a number of other policing, uh, programs that are offered by universities throughout the country." So, that's all not highlighted in either green or yellow. So, that is something that the county has determined.
And where, and where do these specifics come from?
So, I looked at Carol, this came specifically from Caroline County. Um, so...
I, once again, I'm just curious, but yeah, but so why Caroline? There's 23 others we could have picked, so yeah, why Caroline?
Didn't see anyone who sort of addressed it with such, uh, susp, specifics. It was something that in speaking with law enforcement, that they liked the idea of somebody, because if that person's going to be conducting the quarterly meeting of the Police Accountability Board, where there's going to be meetings with the heads of law enforcement agencies and otherwise work with law enforcement agencies and the county government to improve matters of policing, you need an individual who's been, the belief of law enforcement was you need an individual who's been in those positions. You, one rises to the level of head of an agency or in a command position because they've worked, that individual's worked their way up through being a rank, uh, officer to corporal to, all the way up to when they've earned the trust of the command staff to joint command staff. And 20 years is a, a long period of time. The requirement is that person leaves in good standing. So, I think we're already sort of vetting individuals who already have, uh, a rapport with the community, who have already had these, uh, relationships with the various partners located within the community to address these issues in the past. So, again, the, the, the council can amend this in any way, shape, or form. It's not in green or yellow.
Or the other states, the other states, or the other counties, for the most part, following the House Bill sort of generic language that said something to the effect it so, has been experienced law enforcement, has law enforcement, that's, that's in the House Bill, correct?
The House Bill specifically says, uh, appoint a chair of the Police Accountability Board who has relevant experience to the position. Uh, and so, I think that's where, doesn't have to be a retired, sworn law enforcement officer, but I, I guess if you had an individual who had, uh, a master's in policing without ever be, have, or criminal justice, or doctorate in criminal justice, that could potentially qualify as relevant experience, as Councilmember Hastings pointed out last time, uh, an elected State's Attorney or somebody who's been a, a State's Attorney for a long period of time would have that relevant experience. But that term relevant experience is not defined. I believe Worcester County is going to be adopting something similar to what is proposed in Wycomico County.
How can we get it defined?
I don't, ask the legislature to define what relevant experience will be. I know that there is at least one bill in the legislature cleared, the Senate, it's Senate Bill 389, and it's now in the House. It doesn't expound on defining relevant experience.
Mm-hmm. It could be defined as vague.
It could be. Uh, and so, what this is trying to do is do its best to, what would be relevant experience for an individual has to sit on two different boards that oversees policing and can sort of jump between both worlds in listening to the public and be able to take their concerns and formulate them so that leadership of the police departments within the county can understand the public's concerns and, and facilitate that dialogue. So...
Are any counties, um, leaving it up to the, the committee to select their own chair? Because they all have a vote, and I mean, they all have equal voice. The chair doesn't have more...
Didn't you say...
He should just have one vote.
The, so the local governing body shall appoint a chair.
It says they should appoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have to appoint.
Yes.
So, that's exactly the confirmation body, counsel.
And so, whatever the council believes the proper, uh, relevant experience would be for that position would fill in, uh, paragraph E subsection 10 little i. So, uh, but going, so that's where that chairperson is jumping between the two boards, or it, the, the chair is at least sitting of the Police Accountability Board is also sitting on the Administrative Charging Committee unless, uh, the chair designates another member of the Accountability Board. I guess if the, you know, the idea being if the chair's out indefinitely or sick, he can appoint, or she can appoint somebody else to fill in at the Administrative Charging Committee. So, going, are there any questions about that before we go back to page 17?
Just to be clear again, what is the difference between the green and the yellow?
Green is proposed regulations, uh, yellow is state law. And so, the regulations are still going through that review process before it's adopted. So, as we discussed last time, we may be back in August because some of these may change. But for the most part, a lot of this, I, I don't think the chair shall follow the Roberts' Rules of Order is something that the Attorney General is going to have an issue with.
Right. And, and do we, and I know that, I saw the Conduit Street email from Makeout that, that, you know, the worm changes already. I guess, do, do we have a good understanding of how many other current bills there are in the General Assembly before it ends next Monday will affect the current law? Because I know multiple bills were put in. I'm not really sure what's moving, and I guess you've got a handle on that as far as what it comes out with, because I, I, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
I think...
We'll just kind of see what we get.
I think that's really the answer, because if committees don't want to take it up, it, it's not going to get, uh, it's not going to go through. I think the Senate Bill 389 seems to have the most support across the two, uh, bodies. Uh, and so, I think that of all of them, there was another one where it would have allowed every municipality to create their own form of this entire board. That one doesn't really seem to have the scheme to, uh, get off the ground at this point in time, but maybe out there in the future.
So, we're sitting here discussing this, and they could turn around and revamp the whole document.
I don't believe, yes is the answer. I do not believe that will happen this year. Uh, I think a lot of this, the, what's in 670 is law, and that is not changing this year. The regulations are proposed at this time. The regulations could be modified. Uh, so, for example, one of the regulations is where the definition of agency head, conflict of interest, good moral character comes from. And so, that's something that could be changed. If it went through the review process and there was enough comments against it, that's something that could come back. And, uh, and throughout this document, at the end of each section, it says state law controls. So, to the extent that we're not able to update our code because the...
They, they, they can change it anytime.
They can change it, and in between the two, before we get back to amend this, the attorney serving as the liaison to the board, which I imagine will probably be me, uh, will ha, know the current law.
So, we're really just treading water, because we don't know what can happen any day. They could change the whole bill.
I'm going to wait through.
We can sit here and set up all these boards and everything, and the state can come back and say, uh, we want to change everything.
And that's their power. And they, they delegated the county with create the Police Accountability Board, the Administrative Charging Committee, and the trial board process. And next legislative session, they could add a fourth board, or they could remove a board. And all, it's, and that's where it falls.
So, you've got the three boards. Police officer gets accused of doing something that goes all the way through the three boards, and they find him guilty. Okay. His option are to go to court then, correct?
Correct. So, then after there's a trial board, the officer can appeal to the circuit court.
It's, it's a multi-step process. It can take a while, and it can be expensive.
Mm-hmm. And what happens and who makes this, what hap, what happens and who makes this determination while this is going on about this officer being, um, put on administrative paid leave or unpaid leave? Who, who makes that decision? I mean, or do they keep working? I guess that, does that matter as far as the, the level of the complaint?
Yes. Uh, so...
Would that rely, would that depend on his, his agency he's working for, or is, do they have, do they pass laws down as guidance?
They, depending on the level of the complaint. So, if the complaint rises to the level of potentially criminal action, because again, this is not criminal, this is, um, a administrative process for violating, uh, police misconduct in some way. Now, an in, all, an individual who suffers an assault can go this route, but could also potentially try to file criminal charges, or criminal charges may come as a result of this investigation. And then there's provisions within the state law as to what happens to the officer at that point in time.
That's still his question.
Yes.
Now, I was going to ask the same question, um, as many times we see in government, when someone gets in trouble, that they stay on the, um, payroll, and then they keep appealing and appealing, and it extends their time on the payroll. Um, if something is obvious here and there is misconduct, it, it, one of those levels of, can they, um, lose their pay while this is going on, or do they have to stay on the payroll?
So, specifically within House Bill 670, uh, the agency head may suspend a police officer without pay.
Without pay.
And suspend the police officer's police powers on an emergency basis if the officer meets one of, uh, three. And it says a misdemeanor committed in the performance of a duty. So, it does, a misdemeanor can involve fraud, theft, I mean, it can be, I remember there was that, uh, trooper a few years ago who was taking candy bars from the local grocery stores.
City police officer.
Oh, was that, uh...
It was longer than a couple of years.
And that, that's a misdemeanor. It's theft under 100, positive, 90-day maximum penalty, yet that can get you suspended without pay and loss of police powers. So, that's something that's provided for in the law.
Yeah. And when is the deadline to adopt this? I know we mentioned it last time, but I, it slipped my mind.
The, I, I would defer to Ms. Hurley, but I believe the next meeting is the, it has to all be in effect at this time by July 1st, at that point.
Yeah, so we would want to take action by the end of this month.
What do you mean, take action?
Um, you should either approve the bill, make amendments to the bill, um...
We have to take a final vote on this bill by April 19th?
So, we have to have at least one more work session.
It's the last week of April. I didn't bring the, um, exact date with me, but it's that last week. So, you could possibly have a special meeting if needed.
That would be the, well, the 19th is the, is the next meeting date.
The 19th is...
We would have the 26th, which would be the following Tuesday after that, but if we don't, in, in, in the perfect world, we would be passing this on the 19th unless we were to have a special session.
Correct.
Passing this.
Correct.
Okay. That answers my question.
Because of the requirements of the state and our timeframe, correct?
Correct. In order for it to be in effect by July 1st.
Because it has to be in effect by July 1st. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Josh?
I was just going to say, I guess in general, there's a, the broader piece, not specifically on this, the, we've gotten a lot of, uh, emails and a lot of, you know, calls more recently, and now a lot of, handed, uh, a couple of their documents as to potential changes. I guess the, from a process standpoint, I'm not sure the best way that we work through all that, um, just to make sure that we've got a, a good product at the end of the day that we feel like, we feel confident about. Um, I guess I just opened up forever. I don't know. I mean, I can, I can try and work on this and come up with, uh, specific potential amendments and, you know, have them ready to send to you all of that for review, or I, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but this is quite a beast of a bill, or pardon me, of a project in general. And of course, we know it's still being changed at the General Assembly, so we got to potentially react to that, and then yet all pass that by the next meeting, which is quite a lot to, so I appreciate you all and what you're doing and trying to move through this, um, but also want to make sure that the public's voice is heard and that we have, you know, something that makes sense and that we can all feel comfortable with. But obviously, we're running out of time, um, just in order to stay, uh, on pace to pass, uh, in, in time. So, that, that's my general thoughts, I put it without doubt to everybody.
I was going to say, if it's helpful, I can put together a bullet point list of the, um, concerns that have been expressed from this meeting here tonight and our prior meeting, and, you know, hand that out to council and use that as a guide.
And, and I could share. I mean, I've got, I've gotten people who have come out of the woodwork to send me things randomly who are not involved with tonight, who just said, hey, are you all considering this? What's Wycomico County doing that? And I'd love to be able to put that into one stream where we could all feel, review it piece by piece.
You want to email those to me? I can add them to a list.
Mrs. Hurley, um, the PowerPoint, we can put that on the county website as a PDF file. I don't know if everybody would be able to open up PowerPoint, um, but, so we could put that on as a PDF file. And the green and yellow version, we could also put online as a PDF file. I would suggest, because of this situation, the interest in the public, that a link be put on the front web page, so people don't have to cycle all through wherever they might have to want to find it, if it could be an easy link for the public to...
It's not user-friendly.
Yeah. And that way, everything we're looking at here, you'll be able to access that online tomorrow. It's, I mean, it honestly, I think, can be done that quickly.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I saw some taking pictures of the screens trying to get that stuff, and I've been in meetings before, done the same thing. It'll save you a lot of trouble.
And probably want to clarify on the colors too, I think.
Yeah, and, and put that clarification on what the green stands for and the yellow stands for, um, in the doc, or Mrs. Hurley, however it gets done in that final document for the public to understand that as well. Thanks, Josh. That's important. And that way, we could, we, we will, it'll allow better feedback from the public and as we continue to figure out, you know, where we're going to, where we're going to end up with this. Any other questions? All right. Uh, the next meeting we have is, I mean, is, this is certainly going to be on the meeting for the 19th. If we choose to, uh, maybe have a work session before then, we will certainly contact you. We would have to try to get together with the council members to see where we are. Joe?
Can we get, um, in our next brief book, that in those colors? Because ours isn't that way.
It, it's in the brief book.
No, but it's not in those colors.
Yes.
Green and yellow is in there.
See, I don't have it in mine either.
Is it?
Not mine, not yours.
It's on the, I found it too. It took me a while. It's actually the second one. Yeah, they, they put it in twice, that's why.
You have the original bill...
It's not there.
You have the original bill, and then you should have right behind that, the color-coded one.
Oh, you got to keep going.
Don't have it. I've looked three times. I don't have it. It's okay.
I don't have it either.
I don't have it.
It's not there. Sorry.
Thank you for asking, because I don't...
Only certain people got it.
Yeah, you and Josh.
Maybe they're color-blind.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you very much. Thank you.